So, I have a check system. Check as we go through.
Do you have any other agenda?
He stole mine the second I left.
She might, well, I only have a copy.
As soon as cable comes on, we'll stop. We've never had this many people in the room.
Yeah, we're confused.
This is nice.
We don't know what to do.
There's seats up here.
But then I'll bet you as soon as we finish with some of this stuff, everybody's gonna leave. So we'll again be by ourselves.
We won't hold it against them.
We haven't had this much police protection in a long time.
We're assuming it's protection.
Yeah.
We assume there won't be any emergencies.
Oh my god, they all go running out the door.
Where are we going here?
Is the thing on over there?
No.
Are they not?
I hope we can check it off.
I got it.
I saw that light's on.
Yeah, put care. We're on.
Okay, there you are.
Okay, let's get started. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Wednesday, June 28, 2017. Call the meeting to order and our first order business is to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing...
Let me say one thing before you start. I need to inform everybody, part of the open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded. It'll be shown on public access to you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to mention the passing of Sally Bradford, Anita Lopes, Joshua Turcot, and Raymond Thompson. All of these individuals are residents, or have been residents recently, of the town of Dayton. Mrs. Bradford was very active in her church, and she worked in the Mount Hope Mill. And when I first got married, she was my next-door neighbor. Mrs. Lopes, the wife of Sonny Lopes, passed away recently. Everyone knows the Lopes family. Mr. Turcot is the son of a finance committee member, Bridget Connor. And Mr. Thompson was a resident of North Dayton. I request at this moment, a moment of silence to recognize their passing. Thank you, and the Board extends its sympathy to their families.
Just want to let people know that this is gonna be a rather lengthy Board of Selectmen meeting because we, tonight we have to reappoint all the appointments for FY 2018. So we'll do that at the end, but it's gonna take a while, so. You're gonna have to wait till the end. Not really.
Somebody will pull an alarm.
Alright, next order of business is to appoint, or promote George Nichols to Police Sergeant. So Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
There he is, in his favorite spot.
I love this thing right here, this is the greatest thing.
Number one.
Um, thank you, Board. I'm here tonight to make a recommendation for promotion within the Police Department. First of all, we got a guy, a sergeant just retired, was gonna be retiring in July 8th, Ed Dutra. He started in 1986 as a reserve, and then he became a full-timer in 1994. And then he went on to be a sergeant, and then he's gonna be retiring in July 8th. So we got some big shoes to fill, I think. Back in November of 2016, we had a sergeant's exam. It has to, we have to have a sergeant's exam every two years by their contract. So we had a sergeant's exam. In that sergeant's exam, there's three categories, how it works. One is the test, another one is a seniority, and the other one is an interview. So there's three that they have to go through before we choose somebody. And in that, George Nichols, Patrolman Nichols, received the highest score. So he was number one on the list. So it's due now that he becomes a sergeant. George started with the department on 2003 as a reserve, then he became a full-timer in 2005, which I recommended. And during that time, he's done a great job. He's gone above and beyond. He's a great officer. He, I don't like to say cop, but he's a street cop, I can tell you that. Does a great job. So, I would like the American recommendation to the Board to promote George Nichols to Sergeant, effective July 1st of 2017.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, George.
Sergeant Nichols.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
I want to recognize Patrolman Nichols and now Sergeant Nichols for helping build the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge.
He did?
He did.
Something got thrown in the water.
Tell me the story behind that.
When I was crossing, when I would be crossing the bridge, one day George, George stopped me, of course, right? And he said something about, you know, it was cold, it was miserable, whatever. And he was talking about how certain food is good, you know, it stays with you.
To warm you up.
Oreo cookies. After that, I don't know how many boxes I bought. But I usually carry a box in the car, so that's for you, George, thank you.
I have to say that he is a working man, and I'm sure he misses that detail daily. He was down there every day. Every day. And then he'd come to work at four o'clock, so I give the guy a lot of credit, let me tell you.
They were gonna call it the Nichols Newman Bridge.
Um, I just want to change the thing here, I want to just say something about Mike McGee.
Let me just say something about this. You know, Sergeant Dutra is retiring, and, you know, again, I want to thank him for all that he's done, because I know he's done a tremendous amount, not only for the police, but for the highway and other departments, so he deserves a lot of credit.
He did a lot, he did a lot for the town. He did a lot for the department.
And you know, there was a...
He's done a lot, he did a lot for me, too, so.
There's been a lot of comments on Facebook congratulating him and thanking him, and I saw one from a previously young man that he had worked with when the kid was in high school, and was in a lot of trouble. And he thanked him for helping him through that and making him into a responsible citizen.
He was the Dare Officer at the time, when Dare was around. One of his students is Selectmen's Syngraphist, but he did a great job.
I think, I think that applies to all you police officers in fire, you know. That, you know, you're a role model for so many young people in this community that you really, you do a great job, and we appreciate it, so.
I just want to say something about Chief Mike McGee, who's gonna be done tomorrow, supposedly. But the short time that he was there, he was, he did a nice job. Nice job. I worked, you know, I worked with him hand-in-hand, and he was good. Fire and police work well together. We, you know, they do a nice job in the town, so I want to give the Fire Department credit, too, along with the police.
Also want to thank Mike. I also want to thank Mike, you know, he stepped up in a very difficult time for our town and our Fire Department, and has done a tremendous job. And we really appreciate all that he's done, and...
He did, he, during that time, he did a great job.
Tough job, right. So he did a great job. You know, morale is up from what it was, and that's a positive thing.
And I would also mention all the support that Mike was given by Public Safety and town officials and townspeople. I think he was a good choice, well-respected, so thank you, everybody.
Okay.
You really don't know what you're gonna miss.
Oh, we do.
Right now.
Yeah.
Don't know half of Mike McGee.
We wish he would stay, but he's, you know, you can't, that's fine.
The good thing is, you're getting another McGee.
Yeah, the thing is, I saw him every day, so somebody else now has to see me every day. I'll stop by.
At the appointment for Mike?
I do, I'm ready.
For Chris?
Well...
I just want to read it.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got a point.
No, 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 hold on.
For George.
George, okay.
It's not legal, it's not legal till he gets one in.
Oh, he's got cookies, that's all.
He handed them off.
Okay. You want to raise your right hand? Sergeant Nichols. And you speak, you solemnly swear that you faithfully implore you to discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police sergeant in the town of Dayton, according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Mass and the bylaws of the town, so hope you got it. Excuse me?
Stop by and fill out paperwork. And at some point, you need to stop by and fill out your paperwork. But it's legal, it's all legal.
Okay, our next...
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is to appoint Chris McGee as our Acting Fire Chief. We went through a process today where we interviewed several members of the Fire Department that we thought could step, senior people that could step into this interim chief job, and we decided that Chris, at this point, was gonna make the best, our best choice. So with that, is that...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Christopher McGee, Acting Fire Chief.
I second that.
And I just want to add that this will be effective 7/1, 2017, which is Saturday. Any further discussion? If none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Great.
Once I get that signed by the SWAT unit, I can spray you in.
Sorry, no cookies, you have to build a bridge.
And then at some point, just in the office, so you can just fill out the, I can give you a copy of this and stuff like that.
I have to go, I don't want to talk about the work.
Except Tuesday. Except Tuesday. I love this part of the job. Raise your right hands, sir. Mr. McGee, you solemnly swear that you faithfully implore you to discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as our new Acting Fire Chief in the town of Dayton, according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Mass and the bylaws of the town of Dayton, so hope you got it.
I just want to say, you know, Mike McGee was interim for about six months. We're gonna try and expedite the process to get a more permanent chief, a permanent chief, and we're shooting to get this done within the next 60 days. So, just for anybody watching, if everybody knows, we're gonna accept application, we're gonna post it on our website, at the fire stations, and we're...
Wherever they, the Fire Department would like to post it.
Does the Fire, like the Police Department, do you have like a site where other firefighters would look to see if there were vacancies and things like that?
A job board? No.
Okay. We're gonna post it around, and we're gonna accept applications until two weeks from tomorrow. Very short timeframe. That would be by 3:00, 3:00 PM on July 13th? Is that right?
12th is a Wednesday.
I know, 13th is a Friday, I mean a Thursday. So by 3:00 on that Thursday, we'll have applications for anybody who's interested in five chief position, okay? What we're trying to do, and, you know, obviously, get a permanent chief in there, so we get some stability to the department and carry on the good work that you all have been doing, so. And it's nice to see you guys here support the cause, so. We appreciate all the firefighters, too, believe me, I'll see you, so. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, our next order of business is to, the final report regarding Community Preservation Committee grant for the Dayton Historical Society. So Ken, I'll let you...
Well, it's one way to clear out the, have me talk about the CPC grant for the Dayton Historical Society. My name is Campa Cheek, I'm the treasurer for the Dayton Historical Society. I've been treasurer for over 10 years, and I've been the semi-project manager for this project, for the CPC grant that we received. A little bit more than a year ago, the townspeople voted, taxpayers voted unanimously to support the Dayton Historical Society by granting us a grant from the CPC for $125,000. We've gone through the whole process, we've had a lot of things then, which I'll go into shortly, but we spent $99,620 of that money, giving back to the CPC, $25,380, I think, or could be vice versa. So we've spent less than 80% of the funds that were given to us. So this money is being returned to CPC for other projects, similar to what we did at the Dayton Historical Society. We've done a lot of things. You may have seen the outside, Tim, you've seen some of the inside work, but we've done a lot of things in that building. We've had a new septic system put in, we've had a water line moved to the other side instead of going through the whole basement. It's only a part of the basement, you have to be concerned about heating that part of the building. We've had new plumbing put in, a new heating system, electrical upgraded, the schoolhouse that's on the property that came from the church, the community church in the 1997, maybe? We've had that painted on the outside, we've had some work done, we had some additional platform put on the outside of the building. We've had repairs on the outside of the West Lord Davis Museum, we've had the house painted, we had a new roof put on, and we've had the chimneys brought down to the roofline and then repaired historically. We've had a preservationist that guided us through this whole process. Doesn't work for the state, but it works for preservation.
Uh, Manic Preservation.
Preservation. So he's guided us, he's provided us with information on the color of the house. You notice that the house's color's been changed, but apparently that was white back in 1770, because they mixed linseed oil in with the paint as well as lead. So there was never any true white, other than whitewash, and later on, obviously, white came along. We want to thank, number one, Tim Reins and the CPC and the members that have worked with us on this project here. We've had, provided you with seven reports throughout the course of this year. We only had to do it quarterly, we did it more often, keep them up to date, but they've also guided us as to what we can spend and what we can't spend. I want to thank Tom Ferry in the Highway Department, they've provided us with some landscaping, as well as the parking lot. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen who supported us at the town meeting the last time. I want to thank all the contractors, we have very good contractors. Most of our contractors came from Dayton. A painter had painted our house before, he lived in Dayton before, so he wasn't. As well as, we've had, we discovered asbestos in the basement, we had to have that fixed, and there was nobody in Dayton that could do that, so we had to go outside of the town of Dayton. So we're very pleased with the outcome of the, the way the house came out. I'm hoping that the townspeople will also appreciate what we've done, but it's important that this building, that's almost 250 years old, be restored and rehabilitated. So I want to thank all the townspeople and everybody else for all the hard work that we've done. I believe the President of the Historical Society would like to speak. Yes. We have, it's Chris Pacico, she's the President of the Dayton Historical Society. One of our Board of Directors is Joanne Maseen, and this is Ron Blanken. Who's also one of our active members in the society. I want to thank the members of the society, we've done a lot of work inside ourselves, and the President, with the visible part of this project, but we've been doing work inside in these people, as well as other members that aren't here tonight. We've done a lot of the work, we've sanded floors, we've painted in there, we put floors down, we fixed some stuff that was inside the building, so we've done... Yeah, right. And so we've done a lot of, the members themselves have done a lot of work, and it's money that the town didn't have to spend for us doing this work. If there are any questions, I'm willing to answer any questions from anybody, if you have any questions about the project.
Much better than I ever thought it would come out, and I think the other thing I'm impressed by is the amount of effort that you put in to get back to the way it historically should look. And I know I was on the CPC for a while, and, you know, you gotta get a different kind of mortar to do the chimney, so it's period...
Lime and sand for any mortar in it.
Yeah, so, so you guys did a tremendous job, and I know you put a lot of effort into it, and...
We had to work hard with the preservationists. Every time we did something we thought might be appropriate, he would tell us whether it was or not. Good examples of the morgue, also the color of the roof shingles, we had to go by what he told us, what we had to do, as well as the color of the paint, you know, for the house. So we, Jeff Danya, we appreciate all the work that he's done.
The house is more noticeable in that color.
Yes.
It was white, it was just another big white colonial, but now you do a double take, and you look at it, oh.
When we bought the house, it was white, it's also a story house, and now it's pumpkin, so.
Green and the color are all, so more noticeable.
So I just wanted to say, so I don't have any questions. I think it looks amazing, I mean, I don't even need to say it, I mean, you drive by it, it looks fantastic. I did want to say two things. Your fantastic report is on display at Town Hall, if anybody wants to come and read it. The other thing I want to say is, I think it's, you guys are just volunteers, and I think that what you did together, what everybody did together, the various different branches of government, I think is a great example for what's possible when everybody comes together, keeps their eye on the prize, and I did just want to say, on time and under budget. Fantastic. That's awesome. Fantastic. Are you free now? You must have more free time.
I want to recognize Tim and his CPC committee, because they had the first to put this forward to the townspeople for a vote, to keep, to get this restored, and I commend you for doing it.
Thank you.
I think this is the largest project that has been taken on as far as the Historical Society, I mean, it was formed, going back to when they acquired that property and how they had to raise the money to get it, and then all of the work that was done by volunteers to initially open it. Yeah, this is the biggest, certainly the biggest step.
Yeah, the, most of our, all the founding members aren't with us anymore, and we definitely appreciate the work that they have done, specifically Elaine Varley, the one that we knew, going back 30 years ago, that she was the heart of the whole Historical Society, and we wish we had her information and knowledge that left us, when she left us.
She was a military, and she was very afraid it was gonna go away. I wish she could have lived to see.
Well, when we write the next chapter in the history of Dayton, it will be in there.
You know, and I think it's hard, you know, when you look at the house in the shape it was in, it's hard to look at it and say, should we put money into that? But when you look at it now, it's clearly worth it.
It's a no-brainer.
And had great loans.
Yeah, right, right, so anyways, you guys did a great job, and we all appreciate it.
The contractors, and like you said, it's hard to work with us, we constant contact, probably a sick appearance from the, but we let them know everything that we were doing, as well as the committee, and the active members who have just done work that you have, you'll see when we have an opening, but work that you can't see from the outside that they've done. So it really, really looks nice. The President and I love old houses, we bought an old house. When we purchased it, we were told it was 100 years old, it happens, it was built in 1775, so a little bit more than 100 years old, but we appreciate it, as well as, Joanne has an old house, we really appreciate it, and understand how they work and everything else. I know you got a long meeting, so the President would like to speak.
Sure.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Hi, I'm Chris, I'm the President of the Dayton Historical Society. I want to reiterate the thanks to the residents of the town and everybody who helped make this project possible. I will say that the grand reopening is July 1st, Saturday, from 11:00 to 3:00. Starting July 11th, the house will be open on Tuesday mornings from 9:00 to 12:00. It will also be opened by a part, by appointment. The house's phone number is 508-669-4004.
Can you repeat that one more time? I'll make sure to post that.
Now, just a little about the house. First time I went there was to find out the history about my house, because same with Joanne, we had just bought old houses. First time I met Elaine Varley, she turned out to be probably the driving force in my life, as far as the history of that house. She single-handedly kept that open, we were all still working, she was the only one working there. She worked there till the age of about 93. It was one of the loves of her life. But as this whole project has happened, and the rehab has happened, and it looks good, and we obviously house the town's history from the 1700s to the present, the thing about that little house, which is very modest, it was built in 1770, it was built just before the tensions between England and the colonists that resulted in the fight for independence. The man who built that house was a Minuteman, and then later Sam Davis lives there while he's selecting for various terms, just before Strawberry takes over town and becomes the driving force financially for the town. But that little house represents most of the people living in this area in that timeframe. We know that, because we reenact the Revolutionary War. We know the people who lived in houses like that, what they thought, what they were afraid of, what their dreams were. So the house is important. The house then goes on to chronicle the history of this town, Massachusetts, and the country, from the inception of the country to the present day. So that little house, that was very modest, spoke to just about nobody for a long time. If you go in there and just sit there, it'll whisper to you, and it'll hook you in, and it'll tell you the story about Dayton and the rest of the country from that time forward. That's why it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, congratulations.
Ms. Pacico, are you gonna be there telling stories this Saturday? Because I'd be there all day. You hooked me, just now. I was waiting for you to keep going, I'm like, we could spare another 15 minutes for this. Thank you.
My name's Timothy F. Reins, delivered 316 May Street. I'm the Chairman of the Town of Dayton Community Preservation Committee. On behalf of the committee and the membership, I'd like to thank Mr. Pacico and his wife and the members of the Historical Society for their diligence in getting the home done. Again, as Selectmen's Syngraphist already stated, it was on time and under budget. Our hats are off to you, Ken. You know, you know how things went earlier on in the meetings, where we had our doubts, but those doubts have been erased. And I have the utmost respect for you and the members of your committee in order for you to get this project done. And again, I'd like to also thank the residents of the town of Dayton for voting this at town meeting a year ago in June. So again, I'd just like to say one more time that the open house is on July 1st, between the hours of 11:00 and 3:00 PM. Please come and view this beautiful renovation. Thanks, Ken.
Okay. How we getting, boy? Tom, walk in. Give us your name.
In your address.
376 Thomas Hill Drive, Thomasburg. I have, you covered a couple other things already, so one thing, any update on the head of month for the...
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
Oh, okay. Jack, there's one more thing. The other thing, is there anything going on with the, I haven't heard anything on the expansion of the town offices?
Yeah, it's in the works. I don't know exactly what the...
There was just a general date of sometime in August, is that the last that I knew? So we will, we will get an update for the public.
Yeah, somebody just asked, throw it off.
One of the problems, I know, has been, been hard getting some contractors to do the work, because they're all so busy right now, so.
Thank you.
The plastering was done, wasn't it, Tom?
He had to leave, but he's tentatively supposed to be back tomorrow Friday to finish, and then we can resume the painting company next week or the following week. Yes, Jack, we could have, the contractors, we need the contractors to show up as fast as we can.
I have a question. Do we know when the service is up of Mrs. Lopes or any of these people that were listed to say with the best?
Today's paper is...
Yeah.
Thursday evening and Friday morning.
And I think it's 10:00 at St. Nicholas on Friday.
Yeah, I think you're all in now.
And, and Mr. Turcot, I believe, the services for him would be Friday, I believe, 5:00 to 8:00, and I will get the location, we can update everybody on that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. All business. Astronomical Stormwater Easement Agreement.
The AstraZeneca Corporation has agreed to, in effect, donate the easements that we need, and the, they are also providing up to sixty thousand dollars in materials. Is that correct, Tom?
Sixty thousand, yes.
Okay. And they're also having some work done, so, Tom, would you explain what was going on? I told you I saw our equipment last week.
Last week, the, they had to give the East Command to get permission to drain the water from the loom, which is never really our water that flows off Main Street. They had dug a ditch on the south side of that loom, and that's the same water that you can normally see, we've been on to one thirty-eight. And we, there's going to be some pressure clearing soon. Haven't started that yet.
So this agreement lays out all of the legal terminology about the permanent easements, the recording, so forth and so on. And so now that all, this has been reviewed by, well, the previous board of selectmen with Tom, and then we made changes, and it's gone back and forth between the town and the legal council for AstraZeneca. And so at this point, Karen's going to have to witness this, I believe.
I guess we need a motion first.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this. Yeah, it does have to be notarized, and then we got to send it out because it's got to be notarized in Delaware when they, when they execute it. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board wrote to sign a stormwater easement agreement with AstraZeneca for the Main Street Drainage Project.
Second.
Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did you want to add anything?
I did want to thank you, Mr. Ferry, for your work on this. I appreciate it.
Okay, so today's the twenty-eighth.
Very expertise.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a, choose a town department for a yearly audit. Is there anything on this, or just that? Okay. So every year, what happens is the, our regular auditors audit a town department, just to review their processes and, you know, how they, how they approve things, how they order things and that kind of stuff. So we need to pick a department. The two departments that were recommended by the town accountant was either the building commissioner's operation or the police department operation. So unless someone has another that they think would be worth discussing, we'll need to decide.
Before we do that, Karen, you wanted to institute the oath so that you can notarize this?
Sure, we all sign.
We didn't all sign, but we will. We need to sign first.
I swear that you sign that, I'll be a free acting dude.
I will sign that, I'm my free acting dude.
I get you.
We won't mention the pressure, Tom, for this under.
Okay, so what are your thoughts about a town department for an audit?
What was the justification for, and I have no problem with...
It's something at the regular...
Actually, this is, believe it or not, this is freebie. The, oh yeah, the current audit...
Yeah, they do want to audit the town government and the department.
The purpose of doing it is to look at the operations in that department, to see if they need some fine tuning, to make sure that they're following due diligence in whatever they're doing. And I would say, thinking about the two departments, I would say that I would make a motion that we do the building department. It's probably one of the largest, I'll call it, income departments in the town. But if, they're really, I don't have a...
I mean, either one could be done. I look at, I look at it as a police department, a little more complex, so, you know...
Well, the thing about building, the reason I said that is because I'm the one who suggested the police department, and Bob pulled it against me. Jim has put in a new software system that we bought one or two years ago, and he's been fine tuning it and all that. And I think at this point in time, it would be good for the audit, the auditor to look at it and see if it's capturing the income data that should be there and is performing the way it's supposed to perform.
Yeah, I'm okay with building because I think it's, we've been growing fast, we have a lot of building permits over the last couple of years, so I'm okay with that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I made that motion.
I will second that.
Okay. The only other thing I want to say is, people get scared of audits. Audits are not intended to catch anybody doing something wrong. They're intended, intended to look at the operation to help us make improvements if necessary. But they're not, they're not punitive, they're not because we think something's going wrong someplace. I just want to be real clear about that. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for the building inspector department. Okay. Recommendation from the highway superintendent for award of a crane bid for Horton Street culvert installation. Now, this is from Thomas Ferry.
Who's that?
Spelled that wrong. After reviewing, reviewing three crane proposals, we have, for installing our culvert on Horton Street, I'd recommend that PR Precast from Berkeley as the contractor, as they were the lowest bid. Anything else you want to say about that?
Did you say PR or JR?
JR. JR Precast.
They happen to be the people that built the culvert, so they're very familiar with the pieces that need to be moved also. They're very local. They have the two vendors, they try and portal portal.
Oh, yeah.
And it's happened that it's local and cheaper.
Okay, great.
And what was the bid?
Seventeen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that...
No, I'm sorry, Jack, you said what you were doing. Dallas, by the culvert, it, from him is two hundred and hour.
Oh, so we award an hour rate?
Yeah, I was hoping everybody would move in so many pieces.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract for crane services to J and R Precast of County Street Berkeley at a bid price of two hundred dollars per hour, as recommended by the highway superintendent.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye. Motion carries. You want to talk a little bit about that project so people will know? We need to close the road and stuff.
Yes. We're hoping to close that road this coming Monday until our third. Tomorrow night, we still have a little bit more, a little more we have to work in. We need to overestimate, estimate, open that stand out so that the dish is going to remain open while we get the site ready for the crane, for the pieces in place. So with the unknowns and the new water, that we have to work with, roads to remain closed, no traffic, including pedestrians, no bikes, enough until we get this thing wrapped up. And we know the chairman and race is coming up real quick. We don't anticipate taking that long. I'm estimating about a week.
Okay.
And we also have to deal with the holidays next week also. But the one week here is carries up, again, no pedestrians, no bicycles, and a well-used recreational street, so hopefully they adhere to the signs, road closed, no movement traffic.
Okay, great, thank you.
We will put something on social media as well.
Is the content here, all the parts here?
No, they refer to the speech.
Oh, okay.
And they don't, I don't know, the contracts.
Camera conversion contract. Okay, thanks, Tom.
Do you need something, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, what's the, our next thing is a camera conversion contract for the town assessor. the, the software, I guess, that the assessors, that the assessors use, and we are part of that. So our cost for FY twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-two is four thousand and eighty-five dollars. I guess there's planning way ahead, so.
Do you have a recommendation from the town accountant? She's got to approve our contract. Did she sign on?
I don't know. Do you know if she saw this?
Just the town accountant?
Yeah.
No, I do not.
Well, why don't we, I think we can approve it with the stipulation that the town accountant has contracting office review it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve, tentatively, tentatively approve the contract with municipality enrollment Tyler Technologies for C A M A conversion contract for the Board of Assessors.
Second.
If further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we've got a bunch of year-end transfers. We'll get that.
Are you going to do it?
Dennis on?
Yeah, the resignation letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a resignation letter from our CEO of weights and measures. Dear Board of Selectmen, the reason for writing this letter is to notify the board that as July 1st, 2017, I'm retiring from the position of CEO of weights and measures. For the past seventeen years, I have been certified CEO and inspector, and during this period of time, I have served your area performing my job as required of the position. Sign then. Dennis Tebault.
Chairman, I make, I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Dennis Tebault, CEO of weights and measures, with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
Further discussion?
Did we find someone to fill his shoes?
Not yet.
Okay. It's on the list.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. I want to thank Dennis for all his time doing all that work for seventeen years, and I wasn't even aware that we had such a person.
And we got it for vacancy, so if you're sitting out there and you would like to get involved with weights and measures, please volunteer.
We lost the connection here. No, sometimes it still records through.
Ah, okay. Here we go. Okay, we're back. Okay, you have any transfers?
You might want to have Selectman go out and read those, because she knows the very precise reading that's required.
Right.
Here's the election one here. Yeah, here's the election one. Excuse me.
Just so everybody understands what these are, these are year-end transfers between accounts that we need to do to cover expenses that have occurred in 2017 where that line item, that particular line item didn't have enough money in it, but it's all within the same groupings of accounts.
This hasn't been executed yet. We're all having a switch right.
I think we can, again, approve it with the...
Yeah, before we pass it on. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve a transfer of a hundred and twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents from the off-duty police details account, zero one zero zero one one three zero 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 seven oh dash five three zero one two. The town meeting account, salary for checkers account, zero one zero dash zero dash one one three dash zero 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 dash five oh dash five one two oh.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve a transfer of a hundred and eight dollars from Benefits Health Insurance to Parks and Recreation for energy. The sending department, excuse me, the sending account in the treasurer's office, Benefits Health Insurance is zero one dash zero dash, wait a minute, that's too many zeros. It should be zero one zero dash, zero dash nine one four dash zero 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 dash seven oh dash five one seventy-four two. The energy account of Parks and Rec, zero one zero dash zero dash six three zero dash zero 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 dash seven zero dash five two one zero.
I hope you all got that.
Don't keep trying to write in these numbers down.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the transfer of three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-five cents from the Benefits Health Insurance account to a number of, they're all the same account. These are all Park and Recreation invoices that total three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. So the sending account, zero one zero dash zero dash nine one four dash zero 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 dash seven oh dash five one seventy-four two. The receiving account, zero one zero dash zero dash six three zero dash zero 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 dash seven oh dash five two four oh.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a transfer of three thousand dollars from the Police Department Gasoline and Diesel Fuel Account, number zero one zero dash zero dash two one zero dash zero 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 dash seven zero dash five four eight one two. The Communications Department IMC Software, oh, all right, at least we got breakdowns. IMC Software of the three thousand, thousand sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents is for their account, zero one zero dash zero dash two one five dash zero 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 dash seven zero dash five three zero one. Benefits Uniform Allowance in the amount of six hundred dollars, the account is zero one zero dash zero dash two one five dash zero 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 dash seven zero dash five one five two. And training in the amount one thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars, twenty-five cents to account, zero one zero zero dash two one five dash zero 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 dash seven zero dash five one five one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And the last one, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a transfer from the, of eight thousand dollars from the Salary Town Administrator Account Number zero one zero dash zero dash one two four dash zero 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 dash five zero dash five one zero five two. The Waste Collection Account, and this has a breakdown also, the eight thousand dollars is broken down into Salary Landfill Attendant Account, zero one zero dash zero dash four three three dash zero 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 dash five zero dash five one three one.
Any other numbers?
Yeah.
I don't want to say.
The total transfer is eight thousand dollars. Hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents is the landfill account attendant that I just read. The rest of the money is going to the recycling collection account, zero one zero dash zero dash four three three dash zero 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 dash seven zero dash five two nine two, and the amount for recycling collection is seven thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents to make a total of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If there's any questions about that, we'd be glad to read you the number.
Just don't write them down.
Just don't call tonight.
Or don't come, because we're going to be here a long time.
Get these signs, get them out of the way.
I just wanted to make one reminder to the folks who are daring and still watching, the money that came out of the town administrator fund for a transfer, all the remaining monies that weren't spent because we didn't have a town administrator in the fiscal year 2017, that will go back into the general fund.
Okay, our next order of business was to read the Selectmen's appointments, but I think we'll appoint Mr. Borkin to the at-large member... but I think we'll appoint Mr. Borkin to the at-large member of the CPC before, so you don't have to sit here and see all of them.
Thank you.
He may sit through it anyway.
Thanks a little.
What's that?
I'll hang around a little if you're loud.
I have to back.
Absolutely.
So this is an appointment of Thomas Borkin to the Community Preservation Committee at-large member. And this appointment is effective today, 6/28/2017, and runs for a term of three years, which will expire on 6/30/2020.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sue is still here, she can sue. She can.
No, it's nasty. She likes us, but not that much.
Well, thanks, you skipped two things.
Thank you, Mr. Berkley.
We have two items on here to change the grade of the zoning board of the Fields Administrative Appeals Administrative Support and to change the grade of the Board of Health Administrative Support to a grade six, to both of the grades six. And this has been discussed for some time now. What we did to determine that what grade this position should be at was we looked at, we developed a grading system, a numerical grading system. We looked at current positions that were classified as a four. We looked at other current positions that were classified as a six. We put them, we applied those numerical values to several of those positions, and then we applied, so we knew what range we were in. Then we applied that same system to these, to both of these positions. And when we were done, it was clear from the numerical outcome, the quantitative result, that these two positions should be at grade six.
And I just want to piggyback off you, Mr. Chairman. This analysis, just so everybody knows who's watching, was completely objective, which is the part that was reliable and that I really appreciated about that process. And I am sure we'll continue that as we proceed. I will make a, are you entertaining motions?
I am.
I will make a motion that we change the grade for both the zoning board of appeals administrative support and the board of health administrative support positions to grade six.
Second.
Can you enjoy the discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Those will be effective, well, those will be effective going back to the point where the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen were separated.
Which was April of.
April 7th.
April 26, 2017, that was our meeting.
Okay, so it'll be effective as of that date.
I just wanted to also, so to Roslin, who does both of these positions right now, I just want to thank you for all that you do. Does not go unnoticed.
Mr. Chairman, could we hold off on the selectmen's appointments and finish the rest of the agenda?
Absolutely.
We have a whole bunch of warrants, too. We whip through those.
Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Do we have any reports? Do we have any acknowledgements?
I do. I have an, I was going to do it as part of an announcement, but since we're doing acknowledgements first, I just wanted to tell everybody our new website is up and running. And I just wanted to thank two individuals in particular who really helped from the beginning and were really supportive. And I wanted to thank former selectman Dean Cronin. Dean, if you're watching, I really appreciated you believing in the project from the beginning and seeing the value in it. And I did want to thank our fantastic administrative assistant Karen, who helped and entertained my nonsense throughout the process, and I do thank her very, very much. So thank you to you both for your hard work and for believing in the project. So thank you.
I thank you both as well. I also want to thank Brett because Brett has put a lot of time and energy in getting very agitated at times.
Oh, yeah. The heat of the moment.
Up to a few minutes ago.
Many times when he comes in the office, he has a tendency to want to throw things or yell or scream or whatever. Brett, you did a tremendous job getting this up and running, and we appreciate it.
I do have a brief report, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday night at the library, Mrs. Cheryl Aggyar was there, and she made a presentation on the horned owls that were rescued on her property. And she did publish a book about it, and she received a national award.
International Book Award.
Yes, for that. It's her first attempt at writing anything, and I think she self-published 800 copies. But there were people there, really odd bird watchers who specifically look at, I guess they're really interested in the horned owls. And there was mention of the owls that were found in the tree in North, there were screech owls, were they? And somebody asked where they went. I says, Tom said he threw them in the landfill. Then I corrected that, Tom.
I'm not, my aunt was one of those bird enthusiasts that went to the, yeah, yeah. She was that.
So anyhow, it was very, it was very interesting, and there were a lot of questions. So thank you, Mrs. Aggyar, and I enjoyed that.
And I have a signed copy of that book, and it is very well-written, so I wanted to thank you as well.
I got one signed, but I don't have the seal. I want the seal because I have mine.
The seal, I think.
I need to go, but I own a book, too. By the way, Ms. Aggyar is our building inspector's wife, so if you want a copy, probably talk to Jimmy, he'll secure one for you. Okay, approval of minutes of May 3rd, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of meeting, regular meeting of May 3rd be approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Want to do warrants?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant 58-17, the amount of $83,543.38 payroll. Warrant 50B-17, the amount of $155,893.13. Warrant 50C-17, the amount of $310,000. And warrant 50D-17, the amount of $1,489.59. The last three all being accounts payable, and all of these warrants were dated June the 14th, be approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 52A-17, the amount of $81,572.96 payroll. 52B-17, the amount of $30,522.97. Warrant 52C-17, the amount of $28,697.40. Warrant 52D-17, the amount of $86,604.10. And warrant 52E-17, the amount of $15,232.22. The last four being accounts payable, all dated June the 28th, be approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
They just spent a lot of money.
That's, that's the end of our normal agenda.
In our spending spree.
I got to save word. We did that in an hour, so I'm impressed with that.
We've improved upon from last year, that's for sure.
Okay, but now comes the fun one because we have to appoint all the positions that are appointed to FY 18.
Whoops, I already wrote on this one. All right, sorry, I made some notes.
Brett can't help himself. Oh, here we go. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to go down through these. Do we need to approve each one as we go or can we do the whole group at the end?
And then if we have a question or something, yeah. Okay, all right. If you have a single question or you can just, I guess.
So you want me to start and pass this around a little bit?
You, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, administrative assistant, office manager, board of selectmen, Karen Braid.
So moved.
Think about this first.
Advisory Finance Committee.
No, wait a minute, no, you can clump them, but.
But this one is like, it's only Ms. Braid.
So I make that motion.
So approving has to be approved?
You do a block of like, a block of the agents of the board to help, those are a block, like a block of like.
All right, so I made the motion for Karen's appointment.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No discussion?
Might as well say at the end. Karen does a tremendous job, and she's always smiling even when we put all kinds of pressure on her to get things done. Today was one of those days.
And she checks in when she's on vacation. Hopefully she doesn't do that.
Dennis not telling.
We want her to relax.
Advisory Finance Committee Member at Large, Nancy Gulart.
Okay, Brett, one.
I'll make that motion happily.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That Advisory Finance Committee is for the DI School Committee.
Correct.
Advisory Finance Committee Member, DI School, Robert Rindon.
I'll make that motion. So moved.
Oh, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agents of the Board of Health, we have a number here. James Aggyar Jr., Kevin Bernado, Helen Cadlec, Susannah Mederes, Alis Souza, Pamela Waller.
That's it. My, I have no problem approving this block as is. My one question is, if we're going to, so Mr. Bernado is currently a Board of Health member, so is there a reason why we're not approving Mr. Pyers and Mr. Tanis also as agents to the Board of Health?
Because he holds the position of Health Inspector, so that makes him an agent to the Board of Health.
Okay, but is he going to be doing that in?
Unless he resigns, yes, he is.
Okay.
And if something changes, he's got to resign from that position. As Health Inspector. Did you make the motion on that group?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agent to Board of Selectmen, James Aggyar.
What is this?
Agent to Board of Selectmen.
But what is it? Does he have special powers?
Yes.
Agent.
He does?
I don't know.
He would be, he would do any duties assigned by the Board of Selectmen.
But he's under us anyway.
All right, but his official title is Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. So this is an additional duty.
No words, I think.
I will make the motion.
Don't you back him up on it.
Second.
Your role as selectman, backing up the certain things.
Well, there are other things that he could do as an agent of the Board of Selectmen, like an agent of the Board of Health could do inspections or things like that. So this is, this would be something along those lines.
Okay.
Assigned duties. I'll make the motion that we appoint.
Second.
Mr. Aggyar.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. American Disability Act Committee, Thomas Mederes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Animal Control Officers, Stacy Ferry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board of Health Member, Kevin Bernado, Thomas Pyers, and Matthew Tanis.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Board of Register.
No, no, no.
Call the vote.
I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Board of Register, it wasn't highlighted, but.
You just have one, Pam Waller.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, yeah. Pam Waller, Pamela Waller.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Building Commissioner, James Aggyar Jr.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Building Commissioner's Assistant.
So moved.
Clint Hathaway.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Birding Agent, Susannah Mederes, Arthur Morton, and Pamela Waller.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cable Committee. We have several people that are already on that, need to appoint. Andrew LaPointe, a term of five years. And Jack McWher, five years. Matthew.
Rob.
Rob, five years. And Robert Silla, for five years.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Cable Outlet Committee, Jeffrey Pullman.
So moved.
I know, there's a bunch, you can read them.
No, he's the only one that we present.
Oh, oh, he's the only one, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's confusing.
Cemetery Commission, Barbara Danforth, Arthur Morton, and Kenneth Pacheco.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, but they're, like, your appointment goes to 2019, so we don't need to appoint you right now.
It goes to 2018.
No one ever given you a break there. No, I started to do that out of, I took Karen Construction's in, I didn't listen, so I started to do that, but then I realized. If she said do it this way, we do it this way.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. Communication Dispatch Liaison, Teresa Costa, and Paul Boden.
That's it?
I think she's the liaison by herself.
Mr. Reed.
We'll meet, I'm getting to that.
And then he have the regular dispatches.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
No, it looks like we have to do them all.
Right, well, ones of Communication.
The ones on the second page.
Communication Dispatch Liaison is Teresa.
We need to do this one first.
Why didn't you do that?
Do the first two and then the last.
Communication, I know.
All right, I will recommend Paul Reed as 911 Director/Dispatch.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Communication Dispatch Liaison, Teresa Costa.
Moved, a motion.
Second.
Communication.
Nope, you have to vote.
I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll eventually get the hang of this, but. Communication Dispatch, Paul Boden.
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 All right, go to the next.
Teresa Costa, Adam Foss, James Howland, Justin Jackson, Vanessa Smith, and Matthew Tanis.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Community Preservation Committee. We've already done Tom Borkin, so I guess we're all set there.
Oh, we have to do Mr. Torres.
Peter Torres.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then the.
Community Preservation Clerk, Karen Robitaille.
So moved.
So moved, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Conservation Commission, William Frenette, Charles Mellow.
So moved.
Is that just two?
The other, yeah, the others are already, they have.
Okay, I'll second it.
Mr., it says Mr. Souza expired on the, in 2016, is that correct?
2019.
Oh, that was when he was, okay, I'm not rich. Oh, my God.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Constable, Louis Burgess Jr., Ian Daly, Daniel Lonnie, Susannah Mederes, Tom Mederes, Tyler Mederes, Matthew Pollacks, and Rachel Reposa.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Counsel and Agent, James DeRuda.
So moved.
That's it? Go to the next page.
No, this is the only one.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Development Industrial Commission, Thomas Borkin, Cathal O'Brien. Amy Folk.
Before we do anything, does anyone, I don't have a page 16.
No.
I go from 15 to 17.
16 is on the back, the even numbers are on the back, but there's nothing on them.
All right, okay.
She made it easy on us.
Trying to confuse us.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dietting Cultural Council, Patty Raylish Rust, Kristen Kearns, and Frances Linden.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Director of Veteran Services, Donald Hershey.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Disaster Committee Member, James Aguirre Jr., Catherine Antonos, Anthony Azar, Bethany Collins, Stephen Dempsey. Stacy Ferry, Thomas Ferry, Nancy Gulat, Robert McDonald, Ronald Marino, Cathel.
Cathal.
Cathal.
T is not.
The T is not.
Cathal O'Brien, Aval Susan, Jack Taylor, Robin Van Royts, and Brett Sagravas.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, um, I think Mr. Dempsey and.
I was just going to say that.
We shouldn't leave those on.
Correct. Yeah, Mr. Dempsey retired.
Oh, I didn't know, okay.
Superintendent.
So, um, I will, um, make the motion for all of the names mentioned.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Electrical Inspector Assistant Kevin Smith.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Equal Employment Officer Thomas Maderas.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Fence Viewers.
Ooh, how do I get on this?
Explain that to me, Gary.
The Fence Viewers and the rest of it is Field Drivers.
Well, that sounds fun.
Right, exactly. It's sort of Field Drivers, right?
Okay.
You know about old stuff, Mr. Ferry, right?
Why don't you tell us what Field, uh.
Fence Viewers, who is it, Miss Aguirre?
No.
No, Ms. Boragad, it's the Board of the Fence.
I'll say Karen Boragad, Joseph Sylvia Jr., Pam Waller.
Oh, I have to get on the board.
So further discussion, but you explain to us what a Fence Viewer does.
No.
He doesn't, no.
Doesn't it go back to boundary markers?
Yes.
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We can't get more out of you than that, huh?
That's one of the few titles Mr. Ferry doesn't hold.
Okay. Film Liaison.
Oh wait, how many of these can we have? That sounds cool. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll talk to Ms. Maderas about this.
Film Liaison, Susannah Maderas.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Forest Master John Crawford.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
I have one question about this before we go on. So we have a tree warden and a forest master. So if there are, there is an issue with multiple trees, do we call Mr. Crawford? And if it's a single tree, we ring you?
Most of his free trees would be me.
Okay.
Myself. Of course, like the town forest would be dealing with the trust of tree. That's really, I'm working with this process.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We wouldn't let Mr. Ferry in there with the change.
Forty B Committee Member Joe.
Do we really? So I, I don't believe this committee has met in the last year that I was here. And as I spoke to Ms. Heidi Bakke, who is Planning Board Office Manager and also was on this committee, and she said this falls under Planning Board, so I'd like to make the record motion that we, we just dissolve the Forty B Committee.
Um, I don't think we should do that yet. If you want to hold the appointments to a future meeting, the reason I say that is because this committee got organized back, I think when I was on the board the last time. And, um, obviously they dealt with Forty B and the legislation and that whole thing. So let's just.
Let's research what the, what the purpose of this committee is.
Right, and we can either vote to disband it or vote to appoint.
Mm-hmm.
And so that'll be a future agenda here.
I will second that hold.
Okay, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Gas Appliance Inspector Christopher Costa.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Gas Inspector Assistant Ed Majewski.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Gaitra Advisory Board Representative of.
Gatra. Gatra.
The bus company.
I know it, yeah. Gatra Advisory Board Representative of the Disabled Commuter Population Erin Ferry.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
General Volunteer Ronald Smith.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Graves Officer Christopher Reddy.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Green Communities Grant Committee, Chris.
Chantinay.
Chantinay, Jonathan Gray, Vicky Piazza, Jason Quinn, Brett Sagravas, and James Aguirre Jr.
So moved.
I'm on there, I'm not gonna second.
I'll step down and second. On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, though.
Harbor Master Ronald E. Marino.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Harbor Master Assistant Al Xander Symbolisti.
And Mark, you can do them both.
And Mark Duffy.
Oh, sorry, Mark Duffy.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Hearing Clerk Joseph Pacico. Do you know if he's gonna still do it?
I was just.
Okay.
Oh, okay, um, I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Historical Commission Lisa Latch Fletcher, Fletcher, and Myrna Santos.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Industrial Development Financing Authority Member Joseph Figurito.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Inspector of Animals Stacy Ferry.
Okay, this is actually a state appointment, and that appointment came through this spring from the Congress.
So we don't have to reappoint?
No, we, we filed the paperwork and they approved her.
Okay. Inspector of Wires Electrical Inspector, um, I think we're holding on this one.
Which one is that?
Inspector Wires Inspector.
Yes, let's hold on that.
We're holding it. Insurance Advisory Committee Tina Braga, Phyllis J. Haskell, Mary Hathaway, Dennis Hazel, Paul Reed, Gary Sanson, Gary Willett, Susannah Maderas, Mike Rose.
That's it, so moved.
On favor, second. On favor say aye?
Aye. And I wanted to thank that committee, they were very active this year, and they worked with this board and the other various boards and committees to come to a healthcare, uh, health insurance, uh, deal, which was really awesome. I like to think Selectman Gulat did that as well.
IT Committee Sean Cronin, Jennifer Louise, Heidi Swiss, and Jos, Heidi Bakke.
Bakke.
Bakke, and Joslyn Tevadas.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Joint Transportation Planning Board Serpent Donna Kopa.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Land Use Member, Land Use Committee Member, James Aguirre, David Eckerson, Susannah Maderas, David Neely, James Reddy, and Thomas Ferry as ad hoc.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Local Building Inspector Glenn Hathaway.
So moved.
Yes.
He was also the Assistant Buildings, Building Commissioner?
I'm sorry.
Glenn Hathaway.
Local Building Inspector.
What's that difference between that and?
The Assistant?
Yeah, Building Inspector.
Well, Jim is the Building Commissioner, but then there's a. Maybe Jim, Building Commissioner is the umbrella. This is specifically related to buildings. I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Municipal Hearing Officer David Gay.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Municipal Liaison to the Ethics Commission, Susannah Maderas.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Open Space Committee Member Ellen Bidlack, Nelson D'Amello, Dennis Gavoni, Ed Powell, Chantel Crystal Rocha, David Rosa, Heidi Bach, uh, I don't think she can be a member, she's not.
She can be appointed.
Even as a non-resident, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Look at, we just appointed the local building inspector from Fall River.
Heidi Bakke and Joe Timarkin.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Parking Clerk Susannah Maderas.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Personnel Officer Jack Taylor.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries.
Inside, too.
Plumbing Inspector Christopher Costa.
So moved.
Second.
Plumbing Inspector Assistant Ed Majewski.
We're gonna call the vote on the other one.
Oh, doesn't that?
Call Mr. Costa first.
Okay. On favor say aye?
Aye.
And I'll make the motion on the assistant, Mr. Majewski.
I'll second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Police Chief Robert McDonald.
So moved.
Second.
Police Department Patrol Man.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. James Duddy, uh, Police Department Patrolman, James Duddy, Stephen Ferrera, Todd Majewski, Christopher McGann, Ryan Richards, Rachel Rose, Sean Cronin, Paul, I'm sorry, Police Department Sergeant.
Oh, let's start with Patrol.
Yeah, start right there.
Um, I'll make the motion on the Patrolman.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Police Department Sergeant Sean Cronin, David McWher.
That's it, 'cause we.
Yeah, we just appointed.
Mr. Nichols, yep.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Police Station Building Committee Member Sean Cronin, Paul Jolly, Dennis McGee, Michael.
Mizidis.
Mizidis, Joe Pacico, Charles A. Rodriguez.
So moved.
And Robert McDonald Ex officio.
Oh, yeah, that's a separate one.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Police Station Committee Member Ex officio Consultant Robert McDonald.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Procurement Officer Liaison Jennifer Louise.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public Record Access Officer Susannah Maderas.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Public Record Access Officer Assistant Pamela Waller.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reserve Police Officers Jared Jackson, Michael Marshall, John Meadows, Timothy O'Leary, Mark Talbot.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sole Conservation Commission, Thomas Ferry, Nancy Gulat, Charles Mellow, Robert Mullen, Joe Pacico, Jack Taylor, Brett Sagravas.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sole Commission Alternate Member James Aguirre.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Special Police Officer Roger Duarte and William Perry.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Serpent Representative.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. In step test control, Thomas Ferry.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Town River Stewardship Counsel Ronald Marino.
Uh, I'd like to amend this. Uh, Mr. Marino contacted me probably two weeks ago and said that he, uh, had spoke with Assistant Harbor Master Mr. Mark Duffy, and that Mark, uh, he wanted Mr. Duffy to do it, and Mr. Duffy wanted to be the representative from the Harbor Master Department on the Taunton River Stewardship Counsel.
So moved.
Maybe stay at that.
Sorry.
Taunton River Stewardship Counsel Mark Duffy.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Tax Possession Custodian Mary Hathaway.
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye?